I want to call to order the Amberly Council Meeting of May 13th, 2019. Please call the roll.
Peg Conway.
Here.
Ed Hattenbach.
Here.
Alita Kaymine.
Here.
Tom Muthing.
Here.
Ray Warren.
Here.
Natalie Wolf.
Here.
Scott Larmer.
Here.
Kevin McDonough.
Here.
Chief Wallace.
Here.
Rick Kay.
And I just want to welcome our new clerk. Sammy, it's a pleasure to have you join us and I'm sure we look forward to a long period of you here.
Thank you, Mayor.
If everyone could please rise and join me in the Pledge of Allegiance.
(inaudible) to the flag, the United States of America, and to the Republic of America, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
First item on the agenda this evening is our minutes from our last regularly scheduled meeting. Those minutes were circulated in the package to council members. Are there any suggestions, changes to those minutes? Seeing none, we can consider the minutes approved. Next item is our finance report for March 2019.
Included in your council packet was the UAN report. I'd like to give you a summary of some of the items that occurred. We're talking about the month of March, 2019. So earnings tax for the month of March totaled $169,000. This was up about 1.9% from March of 2018. In that particular month last year, we collected $166,000, so we were up to $169,000 this past month. The estimate for the year in terms of collections is $2,750,000. As of the end of March, we have collected about $531,000 in earnings tax. There was no property tax received during the month of March. We received $4,300 from the local government, in the local government from through the state of Ohio. So our revenue for the month of March totaled about $230,000, and that brings our total revenue to date of $1,025,765. So we're about 20% of our revenue that we estimated has been collected thus far. On the expense side, expenses for the month of March totaled $278,000, and our budget for 2019 was $5.2 million, and so far we have spent $1.3 million. So we've spent almost 26% of the budget for the, as of the end of March. And that leaves us with an unencumbered general fund balance of $4.4 million. And that concludes my report.
Are there any questions for the mayor? If not, we'll move on to the next item. And tonight Kathy Kramer and Pete Duffy are joining us to give us a report on the One Stop Drop, which is the annual event put on by the Environmental Stewardship Committee, which collects for recycling electronics and paper. In the last two years, we've had goodwill. So welcome Kathy and Pete.
Thank you. We had an incredibly successful event this year. We collected 45,169 pounds in electronics. That is more than double what we collected last year. We collected 30,250 pounds in paper and 10,250 pounds for goodwill. For a total of actually 42.8 tons. We increased our collections by 17.5 tons this year. And I think a lot of that, we tried really hard to do more advertising. We did a lot on Nextdoor. We just tried to get the word out to surrounding communities and let people know that if they wanted to get rid of it, we'd take it. And obviously, they wanted to get rid of it and we took it. We also, we had more people at the event this year. We had 924 vehicles, which was more than 200 more than last year. Actually, it was an increase of 205. ESC volunteers provided 53 hours of work for the event. And I would like to thank the Environmental Stewardship Committee, the volunteers and village staff, the police force, because they really, really helped a lot in terms of traffic and moving things along. And the recyclers for making this a great event. I would also like to thank Mother Nature, because we were supposed to have rain the entire day, and we had a few sprinkles, but nothing that even slowed us down, so that was great. This was our most successful event to date, and it's going to be tough to top it next year, but we'll try.
I do have a few comments, but I didn't do any of the council members have any questions or comments. I do want to join you down there.
Okay.
And I really do want to thank both of you for the energy you put into this. And this is not just a good service to our community, which it is, but even economically the village benefits because of the tonnage that gets collected based on the Hamilton County recycling. They give us an incentive. We should get, just for this event, approximately $1,500 for 2019. So it's a great thing, everything you do. And I do have a token to give to you. It would be a picture of you two at the One Stop Drop, but Kathy, you are running all over. And Pete, you are too active to get a picture. So we took the picture from you receiving the Tree City USA designation for our 15th year, and it's a framed picture of you two receiving that. So thank you very much for everything you do.
Thank you.
Next item on the agenda this evening is we have two citizens, two citizens to speak on the subject of Dogs Under Control, which was a subject in our most recent print newsletter. First Frank Allenstein, if you could come to the podium.
Thank you for the opportunity to come and address this. I'm Frank Allenstein. I live on 8133 Fontaine Court. And full disclosure, I'm a dog lover. I've owned five dogs my lifetime, two springers, or three Springer Spaniels and two Golden Retrievers. I've also been bit three times during my life, twice when I was a young boy and once a year ago in Amberly Green as I was walking. Two Airedales as they left their parked car. One of them, both of them charged me, and the second one bit me on the leg. I am a big user of Amberly Green. I walk probably every day unless the weather's bad. And even if it's light rain, you might see me out there in my umbrella. I was very pleased, after the incident occurred last year, I got in touch with Natalie, and Natalie and I corresponded via email. And when I saw in the flyer, the Dogs Under Control, I got back with Natalie and told her how pleased I was you guys were addressing this. But I was disappointed, and I thought it was a bit too ambiguous and it didn't have any consequences violating. I went and looked at the Ordinance 9002 online, and I found that too to be a bit ambiguous. I can go into detail, but I think time is probably limited, so I won't do that. But some of the things that are referred here, is your dog visible to you? Well, does that mean they're in eyesight, or does that mean you're watching them? Does the dog respond to your commands? Well, it may very well, but do you command your dog when it's out of control? So I personally would like to see dogs have to be leashed. I used to walk my dogs. I always leashed them. They were very well behaved, but I never trusted them. You never know. And those were good breeds, right, generally? So that's really what I wanted to propose here. I would, if a dog park is something, maybe we'd look into having an fenced-in area for people to let their dogs run freely. I mean, that would be nice for people. But currently, I think it's too dangerous for both humans walking and other dogs if you happen to have them leashed. And thanks again for the opportunity.
Are there any questions? Thank you very much.
You're welcome.
Next, Leslie Kreen.
Highness.
I apologize.
That's okay. It's been done a lot. Leslie Kreen, 6695 West Beachlands Drive. And I'm also here to address the Crest Hills Green space. I, like many others, go to Crest Hills to get exercise for myself and my dog, clear my mind while enjoying this beautiful space. The last thing I want to experience is to feel threatened on my walk in my own neighborhood. When I walk my dog, she is on a leash in a heel position, and if someone is walking towards me with their dog, I move her from heel to side position, placing my body in between my dog and the oncoming dog. I volunteer for Circle Tail where I foster and train dogs to become service dogs, so I am quite aware of training techniques and dog's body language. As mandated under Ordinance 90.02, a dog must either be tethered by a leash or the owner must keep the dog under supervision and reasonable control. As we know for this to occur, a dog off-leash should be no further than 10 feet away from its owner, and when called, the dog must return directly to position next to the owner waiting for the next command, which allows an approaching person with or without a dog to pass without them or their dog feeling physically threatened or annoyed. No dog should ever be allowed to approach another person or dog without first asking the permission if their dog can say hi and then giving the dog the command to do so. I have been verbally attacked on numerous occasions when I asked someone to call their dog, being told, "Don't have to do that. Who do you think you are telling me what to do?" And dogs should be free and allowed to work out their issues. Several times, I have felt threatened for my own safety. Ray, my dog has been aggressively attacked on many occasions while I'm in the middle of a dog fight, struggling to get away without any harm to myself or the dogs while there is no owner in sight or they watch unresponsive. It has become a very stressful environment, and to be on a walk and feel threatened or to have your dog in a state of alert is not pleasant for anyone. This is no longer a safe space for anyone's dog on or off-leash, and certainly not for people who don't like dogs or don't want to be bothered by anyone when out enjoying their time. There are many alternative dog parks that are policed, fenced in, and the rule is always, all dogs must be off-leash. It is well understood that you cannot have dogs on leash and off in the same environment. It does not work. Allowing this to continue the way it is with no system set up for consequences for those people who absolutely refuse to follow the road and written rules, no viable reporting system in place, especially when there is immediate threat occurring, is a disaster waiting to happen. I am now unable to enjoy this beautiful space because of how many times these incidents are occurring. I know many other Amberly residents share my concern, and I hope the council will come up with a solution that will allow all people and their dogs to enjoy the park in a safe manner. Thank you.
Are there any?
Yeah. Thank you, Leslie and Frank, for coming to speak to council. You both called me this month with the exact same issue, and it's not the first time I've heard from either one of you. I have to say, I take my dogs to Amberly Green and I walk them off the leash, but I think that really needs to change. I recently saw a thread of posts on Facebook, on the Pleasant Ridge Facebook page, where people were discussing the off-leash dog park in Amberly, and they were referring to Amberly Green. Several years ago, there weren't a lot of people walking their dogs off the leash, but it really, I mean, if it has become known as the, as Amberly's off-leash dog park, it's, you know, a dog bite, a serious dog bite is going to occur.
I also have heard from residents anecdotally and experienced dog events at the Amberly Green, and I'm wondering if this is something we could assign to a committee, either police, fire, or public buildings and parks, to work and hear more in detail? I'm sorry?
I would propose assigning it to the public buildings and parks committee.
We accept the assignment.
That's a great outcome, and I was going to say, just reiterate all of those things. I thank you both for coming. I actually have been talking about this since I got on council. I'm vehemently in favor of a leash law, and also, if anybody's been at Land Development Committee meetings, I use the word "dog park" all the time in envisioning the opportunity to have a space, potentially, if we, you know, if we can. If anybody wants to write a check for that, great, right now, but just thinking about opportunities to continue to do that. And I was going to say the same thing, Natalie. I think that's the escalation. The tide has turned, and I think it's wonderful that our residents, I think, are really very careful about this and read the newsletter and everything, but I do think it's gotten out of the, out of the village confines. What I was going to say is thank you very much. I agree with you. I also just want to assure you that in addition to the fact that now it's been assigned to a committee to be under discussion, I think this is, this, we were getting to the point in the context of the conversations that are going to be happening around the green and not to jump ahead to those meetings that are going to be happening, but this is part of the feedback, I think, part of the feedback process that is, you know, related to the potential plans. It's not, if you look at some of the potential things that the JCC is talking about, it just, it can't, it's kind of not possible for it to continue unchecked the way it is anyway, even if, even if it doesn't go full, you know, leash law, it's just, it's, I think this is, I think we hear you loud and clear, and also, we're heading in that direction anyway, so I hope you feel very heard on that, and I'm thrilled that it will be going to a committee to be further discussed. Thank you for coming also.
Thank you.
Just have a question. I'm not opposed to it going to the public buildings, public buildings committee. Would it be, would it be better if it went directly to the law committee? And my concern is, I certainly want, I don't want this to be slowed down going one committee and then possibly having to go to another committee.
You know, I think what I would propose is that the public buildings and parks committee meets within the next month, gives a report to council. In those discussions, there may be, you know, items that need to be assigned to the law committee or need to be assigned to the police and fire committee or something like that, but I think the public buildings and parks committee is the right place to start the conversation. But I would, as Chair of the public buildings and parks committee, Councilwoman Conway said that they will meet in the next month, and then they'll give a report to the next council on what that committee, committee found and the way forward.
Yeah, I just want to make sure Leslie and Frank and anybody else who's interested, the committee meetings are open, so if you sign up on the website for meeting notices, you'll get the notice for when these meetings are going to happen, and you can come and provide input.
This is committee parks and recreation?
Public buildings and parks.
Public buildings and parks.
But you can sign up and get, I mean, you get notifications of all committee meetings, all council meetings. You just go on the website and you get the notification.
Thank you.
I just want to point out to keep in perspective that under the enforcement side, you know, you have over 100 acres up there, we have a similar problem at French Park. You know, if, if this happens and things happen and the ordinances are changed, we cannot be the prosecuting witness to file the charges. Whoever the dog runs up on or something like that, they're going to have to sign the charges. We're not, it's going to take us a while to get out there. It's not easy terrain to get to, but at a later time, you know, keep that in perspective when you're writing the ordinance and think about that, because we're not going to be there to witness it, and we're not going to, you know, sign charges against something we haven't witnessed. And a lot of times that we deal with now is, as somebody might, may have been bitten or charged, or somebody jumped on their car or something, I would say every time that we have that, typically, no one's willing to sign the charges, no one's willing to go to court and prosecute, so it's hard for us to enforce something if we can't get the support of the people that are complaining at the same time.
I'm sorry, but you know, you know, under the law, it is required if you're bitten by a dog, that dog needs to be quarantined, proof of ready, and all those things.
You're correct. So we notify the SPCA and we go through that, but if you don't have a prosecuting witness that's willing to come to court when you file criminal charges, it gets thrown out. It's sad, but it's, that's the way it is.
May I speak? I almost filed, but I didn't. I mean, I almost reported it. But my feeling is if once a firm violation is, or a punishment is established, you could go up there any day. Let's say hypothetically, you found out that there was going to be a leash law. If you went up there once a month, you would find many violators, and word would get around.
And that would be about as good as me sitting at the stop sign by your house, and I could write 10 stop sign violations while I'm there. Soon as I leave, I can guarantee you one thing, the next car's going to run the stop sign. Unfortunately, that's what we're dealing with. And, you know, we're all enforced in any way we can, and officers go out there regularly patrol, and, you know, we advise people a lot, but, you know, I want the council to just keep in perspective what we're dealing with too on our side.
Okay, thank you very much. We'll now move on to committee reports, and first, the Streets, Public Utilities, and Sewers Committee.
Thank you, Mayor. The Streets, Public Utilities, and Sewer Committee met on May 6th. We have two items on the agenda, and those items are before you. The first one refers to Resolution 2019-12 authorizing the recognition of National Public Works Week in Amberly Village. The American Public Works Association sets aside a week in May each year to celebrate those services provided by maintenance departments throughout the country. The theme for this year's event is "It Starts Here." Our Public Works Department is referred to as the Amberly Village Maintenance Department and is on call 24/7. And that's for both maintenance department and fire department-related duties. The department is responsible for several tasks critical to the safety and quality of life enjoyed by all village residents. Some of the services provided by the maintenance department include street right-of-way repairs and maintenance, storm sewer pipe and catch basin restoration repairs, snow and ice removal, for which Amberly Village is probably among the best communities providing that service, brush chipping, leaf pickup, tree removal, litter control, maintaining guardrails and traffic signs, buildings and village-owned properties, and vehicle maintenance, including fire department apparatus. In addition, our employees respond to a variety of needs, including flooded streets, storm damage such as trees and tree limbs that have been blown down into the right-of-way, malfunctioning traffic signals and damaged street signs, and certainly, we know that is, we have seen that in the last few weeks with the heavy storms we've had in the village. The department maintains over 56 miles of village streets. The village operates a Class IV composting site on the north side property with brush chipping and leaf collection programs. Over the past year, the village has gathered over 5,600 cubic yards of leaves, 280 cubic yards of logs, and produced over 1,700 cubic yards of chips from brush collected at the curb each year that are recycled as compost and mulch. And as we know, the department, on request, will deliver wood chips and leaf compost material to residents to be used in their landscaping and gardens, and this is all free of charge. The department is led by Maintenance Supervisor Tony Chesney and Foreman Ryan Monahan, along with maintenance workers Rob Langdon, Josh Cottle, Mac Ogletree, Jim Swater, and Bobby Williams. These seven employees accomplish an incredible amount of work for the village, and their service is greatly appreciated. So the Streets Committee recommended to council adopt Resolution 2019-12 authorizing the recognition of National Public, National Public Works Week in Amberly Village.
It has been moved and seconded that we adopt Resolution 2019-12 proclaiming May 19 to 25 as National Public Works Week. Are there any questions or comments? If not, it has been moved and seconded that we adopt Resolution 2019-12. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Being noted that the resolution passed shenanigans.
The second item I'll talk about is regarding purchase of fuel. The village uses three types of fuels, including gasoline, diesel, and heating oil. As with other cost situations related to volume consumption, the village, this time, piggybacked to Hamilton County for superior bids and costs. Of the four vendors that submitted bids, Lykan's Energy Solutions submitted the best bid. The items of interest that you see before you include regular unleaded 87-octane gas, diesel fuel, number one, heating oil, and fuel for generators. The bid basically reflects a delivery charge for the fuel. The actual cost of the fuel, which is referred to as the rack price, will reflect the market price at the time of purchase. The contract is for a minimum of one year. Our current, current one-year contract, which automatically renews, expired in March 2019. So committee recommends Resolution 2019-13 awarding a contract to Lykan's Oil Company for the purchase of fuel through the Hamilton County Purchasing Program.
It has been moved and seconded that we adopt Resolution 2019-13 authorizing the village manager to enter into a contract for the purchase of fuel. Are there any questions or comments? If not, it's been moved and seconded that we adopt Resolution 2019-13. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Being noted that the resolution passed shenanigans.
And that concludes the Streets Committee report. Thank you.
We'll now move on to the police and fire.
Thank you. The police-fire committee met on April 29th, and we have two items this evening. The first is a resolution to proclaim the current week, May 12th to 18th, 2019, as National Law Enforcement Week. This national observance began in 1962 with a proclamation by President Kennedy designating May 15th as Peace Officers Memorial Day, and the week in which that date falls as Police Week. And then a joint resolution of Congress that same year established that National Police Week would pay special recognition to those law enforcement officers who have lost their lives in the line of duty for the safety and protection of others. This is probably this, at least the sixth year in a row that I have presented this resolution. I think every year it becomes more meaningful. There is a local ceremony on Friday, May 17th. It starts at Fountain Square at 11:00 a.m., and it's even more special this year because our own Chief Wallace has been recognized with a Superior Achievement in Police Leadership Award. He received that award Friday evening at a dinner. It will be mentioned at the ceremony on Friday. Then after a little bit of ceremony on Fountain Square, there'll be a parade to the Hamilton County Police Memorial located at Cincinnati Police District 1 Headquarters on Ezra Charles Drive. So everyone is invited to attend. It's really very lovely. So I'd like to move that we adopt Resolution 2019-14 proclaiming the week of, May 12th to 18th as National Law Enforcement Memorial Week, and May 15th as Peace Officers Memorial Day. We'll move.
It has been moved and seconded that we adopt Resolution 2019-14 proclaiming the week of May 12th to 18th, 2019, as National Law Enforcement Memorial. Are there any questions or comments? If not, it has been moved and seconded that we adopt Resolution 2019-14. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Being noted that the resolution passed shenanigans.
The second item concerns the purchase of Apple MacBook computers for the heroine task force. You may recall that in, at the end of 2017, Amberly agreed to house the position of the heroine task force commander. It's funded through many sources, but he operates out of here. And to support that work, many jurisdictions pursue grants on behalf of the task force, and Amberly pursued a grant to get some funding to purchase 12 laptops essentially, so that they can do more work in the field. That will allow them to work more quickly, to get video, access to video more quickly, which will, is very important to their investigations. They handle death investigations for all 45 Hamilton County Police Agents. They handle death investigations for all 45 Hamilton County police agencies, and rather than wait to get back to the office, this will help them be more efficient. So we will basically advance the funds, and then it will be reimbursed through the grant. So I move that we adopt Resolution Number 2019-15 authorizing the village manager to purchase 12 new MacBooks, digital hard drives, and laptop cases for the heroine task force in an amount not to exceed $13,000. So moved.
Second. It has been moved and seconded that we adopt Resolution 2019-15 authorizing the village manager to purchase new computer equipment for the heroine task force. Are there any questions or comments? If not, it has been moved and seconded that we adopt Resolution 2019-15. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Being noted that the resolution passed unanimously.
And that concludes the Police-Fire Report.
Okay. Next item is the Land Development Committee, and as chair of the Land Development Committee, I will present the report. The committee met on April 29th. The purpose of this meeting was to receive results from our two studies that were done related to Amberly Green. These studies were done to look at, basically, pedestrian access was one study, and then vehicle access to the property. On the pedestrian access, this study was funded by a grant that we received the funds. It looked at, first of all, the possibility of a multi-use path sometime in the future which would run from Section Road through on the east side of Ridge. So the first section would run through a portion of French Park, and once it exited French Park, the period that it would go through French Park, the Cincinnati Parks people are very amenable to this. We have, I mean, the study just looked at the possibility of doing this. It did not come up with a specific plan as to where you would specifically place it or anything like that. After it exited the French Park, it would then return closer to the street, or continue on the east side of Ridge, up to Galbraith, and then it would go beyond Galbraith all the way up to the existing, across from the existing JCC. As I said, this was paid for by a grant and really established this, a plan that we might think about in the future. The nice thing about having the plan is these types of things are mainly paid for by grants. Once you have a plan, you might be able to start applying for grants. In all likelihood, if we ever do anything like this in the future, it would be done in phases. The total cost of doing this is $2.5 million. So it is not something that the village can do on its own or much at all. But, you know, as the Vice Mayor has pointed out, the fact of having a plan allows you to consider in the future and apply for grants. The other two connectivity on the pedestrian side we looked at was a connectivity to the Tuitwood and Willowbrook areas, and this would be a foot trail and would involve some stairs, but not, this would be something that is not a paved trail or anything like that. The cost of this one was only $57,000. And the other connection was a connection into Fernwood, and in that case, the cost was $26,000. This was a, something that the Land Development Committee wanted to see done, to just have a better understanding of how we, as we think about things on Amberly Green and possibly start development, how do we get our residents to the development in the most efficient manner? So, you know, this was a great thing that our village manager was able to get some grant money to help pay for this, and I think it gives us something on paper to think about in the future. The second study was for vehicle access, and it was vehicle access very specifically to the southwest portion of Amberly Green. So for those people who have walked Amberly Green and so forth, this would be the back left-hand portion of the property as you look at the property from Ridge, which is an area which is very flat and could possibly be something that we think about for development in the future. When the Land Development Committee has discussed this in the past, we kind of concluded that if we can't determine a way to get access to that back portion of the property, and from the standpoint of development, that you really will never be able to do any development, that it would purely be for green space. There were three options looked at for accessing vehicles back to the southwest corner of the property. Option one was to start from Section, from Galbraith Road, roughly a few hundred yards from Ridge is where you would enter Amberly Green, and then it would go to the, past the existing lake, and then eventually would angle back out to the back of the property. The cost of this option was $1.2 million. Option two would go straight across the dam, which forms that lake right there. The feasibility of doing this, we are not sure of, is whether you could take vehicles across that dam or whether you'd have to bridge across, but the estimated cost was $1.6 million. And the final option was to go at the very back of the property and go through some properties that would actually be in Reading. This would involve us having to acquire some properties down in Reading, but it would exit across from Nolk Press on Galbraith. The cost of this one was $1.3 million excluding any access or purchase of property. The conclusion of this, we kind of felt as a Land Development Committee, was that it kind of said that, you know, we might be able to do something in the back portion of the property. Not today, you know, if there was, you know, some kind of commercial development, you know, 10 years from now. It said that we can get access to the property. It's not cheap, but it's not something that we should disregard. So I think, you know, as a Land Development Committee, we, our plan at this point for that portion of the property is it's green space, will remain green space until something, you know, very specific came along, and we can consider it that way. But it kind of said to us that we can do something. I think the one that we will probably look at a little bit further is the going across the dam as to what specifically would be required there, because that's kind of the midpoint of those, and gives the additional benefit of accessing more of the property than, you know, like Option 3, going down across from Nolk Press, that only access that back portion of the property. So it was an action that the Land Development Committee wanted to look at. It's now complete, and I think it was a good study done by the engineers on this. So are there any questions or comments?
Yeah, I just want to emphasize, as the chief said, these plans are really important and very good for Amberly. Without the plans, we're stuck in the past, and with the plans, we're thinking about the future. We're thinking about how people can get from one place to another within Amberly Village without getting in their car, and that is very important. And our committee, this was paid for by a grant that Scott brought to the Land Development Committee, and I'm on that committee, and it's not the first time we've, me, I've wanted us to apply for a grant, but this is the committee, this went to the right committee. And Scott, this is, I said it in the meeting, great use of grant money. I'm so pleased to have a connectivity plan. And will this be available at the six town hall or the six meetings that are community meetings?
Yes. The connectivity plan that the mayor referenced, as well as the Galbraith Road access study, will both be available for residents to view, as well as take a copy if they would like to see it. And then, once we have the open house, we'll also make all this available online for our residents.
Great. I mean, it doesn't mean that we're going to get, that this is going to happen, but it can never happen without a plan, so.
Any other questions or comments? If not, that concludes my Land Development Committee report. We'll now move on to Public Buildings and Parks.
Okay. The Public Buildings and Parks Committee met on May 6th to consider a estimate for roof repair to the municipal building. The building was built in 2000, and so at 19 years old, it's having some issues. The roof is a combination of pitch metal and flat rubber roofing material, and it's the flat roof that is having the issues. They've been doing some periodic maintenance basically every year, and now it's reached a kind of critical point. Staff talked to several different companies and felt that, what is the name of the company? Mid Miami Roofing seemed to have the most sensible approach. You will have seen in your council packet that they're looking at three different areas. Roof Area 1 is the flat roof over the firehouse mezzanine, and this, the required repair is, would be to cut out and replace the damaged insulation board, remove the coping cap, cover and seal the entire area with new rubber material, and reinstall the coping cap. And the cost for this is $7,500, and it will come with a 12-year workmanship and material warranty through the manufacturer. Roof Areas 2 and 3 would involve resealing all existing patches, inspecting and repairing any areas that could become potential leaks, and that would be done on a time and materials basis, not to exceed $5,600, and will come with a two-year workmanship warranty through the contractor. So the committee approved or recommends that we go forward with this, and so I move that we adopt Resolution Number 2019-16 authorizing the village manager to enter into a contract with Mid Miami Roofing to make necessary repairs to the municipal building roof. So moved.
Second. Okay, it has been moved and seconded that we adopt Resolution 2019-16 authorizing the village manager to enter into a contract to repair the roof here at the village municipal building. Are there any questions or comments? If not, it has been moved and seconded that we adopt Resolution 2019-16. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed?
That concludes our report.
Being noted that the resolution passed unanimously. Okay, we'll now move on to the manning.
Thank you, Mayor. I had two brief items I wanted to mention. The first, thank you for acknowledging Tammy. This is Tammy Reasoner's first council meeting, so she's serving here tonight as the clerk of council, but she is also the executive assistant in our office. So Tammy began about two and a half weeks ago, and she replaces Nicole Browder, who was, who had been with us for about 12 years. Tammy comes to us highly recommended. She is very well qualified for this position because of her expertise in the field of public relations. So she has been a, worked for Purcell Marion for quite a few years as the Director of Marketing and Communications. And then prior to that, Tammy served as the Vice President of Marketing and Public Relations at her own company, which was called Yardwig Communications. She's also worked in public relations for two nonprofits, the Free Store Food Bank, as well as people working cooperatively. And Tammy served a short stint as a legislative aide in the, at the State House, so she's quite proud of that. So Tammy brings a lot of media experience and administrative experience to the staff, and she is also a village resident, has been here for about seven years. So she certainly has a very keen interest in the village operation. So we're just thrilled that Tammy is on staff and looking forward to her assisting us in managing the village. The second item in regards to the, a series of open houses, all the residents received the print newsletter a few weeks ago announcing our open house sessions for the discussion about Amberly Green and the Jewish Community Center proposal. So the first one of those open house meetings begins tomorrow at 3 o'clock in the afternoon. It's a two-hour period for each of the open houses, and residents can come and go as they would like. You don't have to be here at 3:00, and you can come whenever you'd like, but the community room downstairs will be open during that two-hour period. There is, the plan is for residents to be shown some of the documentation that the village has on Amberly Green, and that leads up to what the Jewish Community Center has presented to the village. So there's information about the MKSK study that was done in 2017 that carried over into 2018. There's information about the most recent study that the mayor was talking about earlier, the connectivity study along Ridge Road, and there's also the piece on Galbraith Road. We have some photos that'll be available for residents to look at. We have a frequently asked question sheet that you can take and hopefully answer some of the questions that you might have. But it's also a time to interact with staff, as well as interact with council members, and most importantly, as we're seeking resident input on Amberly Green and the JCC proposal. So just want to emphasize that this is the time in order to make your comments known to council about what you would like to see on that property, what you think of the Jewish Community Center's proposal on that property as well. So that's what we're seeking, and if you're not familiar with the dates, we will have them listed on the website, but there are six different dates that are occurring over the next two-week period, and we encourage residents to attend. And if you're not able to attend, it will be posted on our website, and therefore you can give us comments back that way as well. And that concludes my report.
Are there any questions for the manning? Now we'll move on to the, no, chief report. We'll move on to the mayor's report. Just two quick items related to the Environmental Stewardship Committee. The committee will meet next Monday, May 20th, at 7:00 o'clock down in the community room. Anyone who would like to attend is welcome. And the Environmental Stewardship Committee does things like the ones talked about, and they also did a program along with Cincinnati Parks that was excellent up in French Park on pollinators. There was a naturalist from Cincinnati Parks that presented to residents. This person was just full of energy and was just an excellent program. So I encourage residents to take advantage of these programs as they come about. This is the, I think, the second or third time we've done something with Cincinnati Parks, and they do a great job. And then the other one I wanted to mention was, there will be a Clean the Green this Thursday at 5:30. This is a volunteer group that works on trying to do some minor maintenance around some trees down at Amberly Green that the village can't afford to do. And so anyone interested, just meet in the parking lot at 5:30. It's a lot of fun. And then I want to first welcome everyone to this, this is a real privilege tonight to honor the chief. I've commented a number of times that when I got to swear in police officers, that this is one of the real privileges of being the mayor of this community, or to actually interact with the police and things like that. But there's nothing greater than to honor you, and so I am very privileged to do that to see. So if you'll join me down. Go. Chief, when I heard you received the Superior.
Understand the media guy will be texting in if he can't hear.
I mean, when you, I heard that you received this Superior Achievement Award, my first reaction was I could not imagine someone better. I mean, your leadership in this village, whether, you know, you have a, you have a really unique leadership style. It's a very quiet leadership style, but it is extremely effective. I mean, from, throughout the employees, be those police, anyone else, you're putting the culture in those employees of serving the community. I think that just the number of people here this evening is recognizing of what your leadership is about. This is not, you know, I think this is the leadership for Amberly Village residents and employees and things like that, but your leadership on the shield and everything like that, it is just amazing how much you accomplish in your that, it is just amazing how much you accomplish in, in your day. And, you know, your day tends to extend well past a normal day. The amount of times you've been in here actually serving as a police officer on a night duty or some, something like that is just amazing. But that, that is what leadership's all about, that says to everyone around you that you really do care. And I, I know, all residents know, you care immensely about what happens with them, be that the Orthodox community when there's an, a event somewhere else in the United States and you quickly respond to that or be it, you know, a bicycle fare that you want to run or last year's ice cream social, your leadership is just second to none. And so, you know, I, I just think this award is, is so warranted and I congratulate you.
Thanks.
Now I know Ilana Nadal from the Jewish Community Center wanted to make a couple comments.
My name is Ilana Nadal and I'm the operations associate at the Mayors and JCC. This evening I represent the Mayors and JCC, Safe Cincinnati, and the Jewish Community Relations Council. Over the past three years, I've had the opportunity and privilege to work with and learn from Chief Wallace as my job includes overseeing our campus safety, security, and emergency preparedness. Under his leadership, the Mayors and JCC and all the facilities in Amberly are basically a second command post for their officers, not because they have to be there, but because they want to be there. Unfortunately, this, last year has seen several sad and dangerous new firsts for the American Jewish community. The attack on the Tree of Life synagogue in Pittsburgh was the first time in 350 years of American history that the Jews were gunned down in their house of worship and only six months later, we witnessed the second event like this in a synagogue outside San Diego. When community members come to us concerned, I tell them about Chief Wallace. I tell them about how thanks to Chief Wallace's leadership, when I dropped my kids off at the JCC Early Childhood School, Amberly officers there with a reassuring smile and a wave, not because they have to be there, but because they want to be there. I tell them about how thanks to Chief Wallace's leadership, on the Shabbat when 11 Jews were murdered in Pittsburgh, his officers dropped what they were doing to literally walk with members of our Orthodox community to services so that they could deliver the devastating news to them in person. His officers know those members, know those members of our community won't be using their phones or cars because it was Shabbat. They knew this because they had taken the time to get to know our community, not because they had to, but because they wanted to. A little over two years ago, I called Chief Wallace on his cellphone as I ran down the back stairwell of the JCC and confirmed a voice on the other end of the phone telling us there was a bomb in our basement. The calm in his voice when he said, "We're on our way," reassured me that he and the entire Amberly Village Police and Fire Department had our backs. I cannot begin to put into words how I felt that day watching their department go above and beyond. In addition to their tasks as a police and fire department, I saw the lieutenant carrying a wet child out of the building and helping them change into dry clothing. I saw an off-duty officer who happened to be at the station picking something up, reading to and coloring with our preschoolers. I saw a dispatcher cuddling a baby as she waited for her mother to pick her up. These things happen because of the leadership of Chief Wallace. Chief, thank you for being the person you are, teaching us and always giving my children too much candy when they come to the station to visit.
I, I'll probably miss somebody or miss something, but, you know, this award, you know, it goes to me, but it goes to my family as well, my wife, Kim, my daughter Kendra, Now, I'm going to get through this, but I wear my emotions on my sleeve. I'm not afraid to cry, so I probably can get through it, but if I do, just bear with me. I, you know, I, I have this opportunity to do what I do, not only for the community, but for the department because of my great boss that I have, that Scott Larmour, the city manager, who understands the importance of networking and getting outside of Amberly so we could actually bring resources in to make things better for our residents as well as our officers. You know, the council, they continue to, you know, support my crazy ideas. I think I brought a lot to the table, but they continue to support them and we continue to move Amberly forward on a regular basis. Then, this award is because of my staff. It's not because of what I did or what I do, it's because of them. If it wasn't for Lieutenant Bloom, you know, handling a lot of day-to-day operations, if it wasn't for Sergeant Smith-Goss and Sergeant Kanig, Sergeant Shaw and Sergeant Garing running their shifts and doing their things, I wouldn't have the abilities to do what I do. My administrative assistant, Robin Kemp, she takes on a lot of responsibilities. See, it's kind of a joke, if I joined another committee, she, her common response is, "What did we join now?" Because she knows she's going to get stuck dealing with that. You know, I appreciate working for this community. I, I literally put my heart and soul into this community. You know, it, you can ask my wife, my phone rings at 2:00 in the morning or 3:00 in the morning and I'm answering it. I'm getting up, I'm getting emails at 5:00 in the morning, I'm sending responses. The majority of the community has my cellphone number. I'm going to get dinged for saying um by somebody in this room, but when this is over. We, you know, but I think that's what this community is, you know? I can reach out to anybody in this community at any given time and they've been there to support me and do things for me. And I feel like if we have an opportunity to help somebody else or give that person, that one person, the police department, they may know or be comfortable to call, that's what my goal is. You know, I got into police work because of something that happened to me and, you know, I'm, I'm going to say something that is probably going to floor everybody in this room and it's going to be out there for everybody to hear, but, you know, when I was a young kid, I was 19 years old, I was locked in a house and I was sexually assaulted by three older women. You know, getting away, I was able to get away and not much happened, but when I reported that to the police, I went to that police station, reported it and they wanted me to repeat the story. And the common joke was, you know, "What's her address? What's their address?" You know, it's, it's a joke how a guy can't be assaulted or nothing can like that impact and affect a guy. My whole life, I wanted to be a fireman. That day told me I wanted to be a policeman. I want to be who I am and I want to impact everybody's life in a positive way. And I tell our guys here, it doesn't matter if somebody's pet died, could be their dog, could be their cat, or could be a child, you know? To them, that's the most impactful thing that's happened in their life at that moment and we treat that all the same. We don't laugh, we don't make fun, we don't, we're there to support them. And because of my encounter, that, I think that's what made me who I am and because of who I work for right here, you know, that's what gives me the opportunity. I mean, I love this community, I love each and every one of you guys. I can never say enough thanks to everyone that continues to support me. But, so this award goes to, to you as well and council as well as myself, but this is a community award and I appreciate to be the one to receive it for everybody. Thanks.
Okay, is there any new business?
Well, I hate, I hate to follow that, but with something as mundane as this, but since there are a lot of people here, it might be a good time to announce that on May 22nd from 6:00 to 7:00 PM, the We Thrive group will be meeting at the JCC and they're discussing chronic disease pathway, which is just another way of saying making Amberly a happy, healthy place to live. And on Wednesday, May 29th, the Human Rights Commission is meeting from 5:00 to 6:00 PM here. I don't know, it'll be in this building somewhere, but everybody is welcome to come to both of these and the ESC meeting.
And very quickly, if you liked this meeting and want to come back next month, we're not meeting at our regular, like, we usually meet on the second Monday of the month. Next week, we're actually meeting on the third Monday of the month. You'll, you know, if you sign up for our notices, you'll get that, but just wanted to remind everybody that next month's meeting is not on our regular second Monday.
Any other new business? If not, we can consider the meeting adjourned and everyone's welcome to join us for the celebration with the chief.